I would now call to October 19, 2015, City Council Meeting No Order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you into political allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Want to welcome those in attendance, as well as those that might listen to the audio at a later time. Next, we have the consent agenda, their items that need to be pulled. If not, accept the motion for approval.
So moved.
To their second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kowell.
Aye.
Councilman Levison.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on the rezoning of St. Luke's Specialty Clinic.
Mayor of the city has the following exhibit entered into the record. City Council Information Form with Attachments, Staff Report with Attachments, Affidavit of Publication as Advertised in the Examiner, September 26, 2015. Application with Attachments, 185-foot Notification Map, Names, Addresses of Property Owners Within 185 Feet of Site, Copy of Letter Sent to Property Owners. Title for Land Used, Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference and 2003 Comprehensive Plan by Reference. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Your Honor and Councilman. Before you, it's a request from St. Luke's Health System to rezone property at the southeast corner of northeast Artemis Road and northeast Adams Dairy Parkway of approximately just over 10 acres in size. The applicant is proposing to develop a two-story, approximately 36,000-sper-foot medical office building on the 10.34-plus-minus-acre property, looking to have two additional phases at a later time. The property is currently zoned ag, which is county agriculture, and they're looking to rezone it to SO/ADPO, which is service office in the Adams Dairy Parkway overlay district. The proposal, the application was heard at a public hearing at the planning commission last week. The planning commission has recommended approval, along with staff's recommendation for approval. The planning commission recommended approval on a vote of seven to zero. So, do you understand any questions? If there are any.
Are there any questions of the council for Ms. Allen? Seeing none, thank you. Do applicants like to come forward and make any comments at this? Sam?
Hi, Jeremy Becktole, St. Luke's Health System. Just want to thank you guys for hearing us tonight, and we're excited to further our presence into Blue Springs and provide better care closer to home for you guys, and I'm excited to have additional primary care physicians, specialty physicians, and radiology and additional care at the new facility.
Okay. Are there any questions of the council? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Anyone else from your organization? Okay. We'll take it to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? In support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? We'll close this public hearing. Next, we'll have the introduction ring of Bill 4400.
Introducing John.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4400, an ordinance rezoning property from AG County Agriculture to SO-ADPO Service Office Adams Dairy Parkway Overlay.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
To their second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4400, an ordinance rezoning property from AG County Agriculture to SO-ADPO Service Office Adams Dairy Parkway Overlay.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
To their second.
Councilman Edmondson, did you?
Yeah.
He did.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just to say, welcome to the, to Blue Springs, and thanks for the investment.
Yes.
Thank you for those comments. Where this facility will be located is something that we have been longing for, some activity for a long time, the 63 acres, 23 owned by the city, and the 40 now with St. Luke's. We have been longing for some activity there, and thank you, St. Luke's, for priming the pump. Hopefully, that'll be just the start of much more activity on that, at that location. So, any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Levison.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kowell.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4573.
Next, we have introduction ring of Bill 4401.
I'll introduce it.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4401, an ordinance amending Chapters 100, 220, 315, 340, and 380 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, relating to penalties that may be imposed in various violations.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
To their second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4401, an ordinance amending Chapters 100, 220, 315, 340, and 380 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, relating to penalties that may be imposed in various violations.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
To their second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kowell.
Aye.
Councilman Levison.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4574.
Next, we have a presentation from the Economic Development Corporation Performance Emergency Mint Program. We have Brian Sterner and Steve Westerman, Chief.
It's nice to be able to go into my closet and pick a different uniform. But in light of the comments earlier about the 707 deadline, that's my report. Is there any questions? No, seriously, I would like to thank the mayor and the council for inviting us to come into the meeting tonight and give us some, give you some highlights and some changes that are coming with the EDC. As you know, EDC is 10 years old this year, a public-private organization. We have had some challenges, continue to have some challenges, but we are still growing strong. We have 18 board members, six of those are city-appointed seats. One of those is by city staff, and Adam Norris is filling that. We have six seats that are appointed or elected, excuse me, by our 57 investors, three standing seats, Blue Springs School District, Chamber of Commerce, and CJC. And then we have one seat for the past chairman and two seats, non-voting, for the advisory board, and then also Blue Springs Growth Initiative. We are a public-private nonprofit organization. We have about 30 to 35 percent of our funding coming from non-city investors, and then obviously, the city is providing the remainder of that. Over the last 10 years, collaboration of numerous organizations supporting our growth, we have started with the initial investment of the city, then we grew to 27 investors, and now the 57 that I mentioned today. We continue to strive and keep businesses and civic leaders involved in working on the community's behalf, advocating for community betterment and change provided through input of investors and stakeholders. We've achieved a lot of business development results. Obviously, St. Luke's, we've worked on with the city over the past year, but we have Excelligent that came into town, Acto Development, also assistance with St. Mary's Medical Center, along with all of the retail restaurant changes that have happened over the last 10 years. We have a professional and trained staff of three and a half people, and a lot of days when I walk in the office, it seems like we have 10 people doing that work that three and a half are doing, so my hat's off to them. And then, obviously, we collaborate closely with the city daily, city staff. Over the last 10 years, the budget has been a challenge, but I want to, I'm here tonight to tell you that there are some changes being made and looked at, and to see if we can help with that. One of the first changes we've already made is changed our fiscal year to align with the city and CJC. After the research that we've done with the budgets over the past couple of years, it seems like this change will help the monthly cash flow a lot better, and by the end of the year, we should be in different situations than we have been in the past few years. One of the other things we're doing is looking at new investors, but also looking at current investor levels. We want to make sure that everybody is equal and uniform across the board, but also that we're current with other economic development corporations in the metro area. We're also researching other unique nonprofit ways to, for staff, and not only staff payment and how we deal with staff, but also the benefits dealing with staff. There are some ways that we're looking at that might help us out economically there. We're also looking at various site locations, changing from where we currently are in order to gain some budget efficiencies. We've also looked at other methods of financing. Thanks to the city and CJC, we did bring in Convergent to do a study on capital campaigns and see if that was a possibility. We interviewed, or Convergent interviewed probably 40 or so various people, stakeholders within the community. We found out several things, found out that there was a large support for having a shovel-ready property, ready to go. There was also support, surprisingly enough, of investors that were willing to up their or increase their investment, so we'll be checking into those. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, and at the end of that report, it was obvious that with our budget, we're not, it's not feasible to conduct any major capital campaigns. It is just out of our budget range, and we do not want to come back to the city or anybody else in order to pay for that campaign, so we will look at other options down the road. While we are a separate entity and we're not a city department, we do want to make some changes, though, with how we communicate with the city council, since you are a major investor, and we want to make sure that we pursue more communication, more transparency, and through several different methods. One, we're going to be, start reporting to you bi-monthly, or bi-annually, excuse me, twice a year, and we've implemented some new performance metrics, and I think the first installment of that was in your packet. This is still a work in progress, I would say, so if there are any changes you'd like to see, we can still make those changes. But it also, it looks at not only a snapshot of the city as far as the demographics of not only the people who live and work here, but also looks at the reality and whether, what's available, what's not available, going prices, and then also projects that EDC is working on, giving you the six-month look at where we are against our annual goals. We'll continue to, along with those changes, we'll continue to go along with all of the other programs and methods of communication that we have been doing in the past, communicating with you and our investors. In closing, over the last 10 years, we've grown to 57 investors with past chairs, including Eric Johnson, Bill Esray, Lisa Franklin, Lyle Shaver, and Bill Esman. We've taken the city input to grow from the city department to the current nonprofit public-private organization that we are, and we are, our mission is definitely for the growth, development, and retention of our business community. More needs to be done with that, and we are confident that with, with the leadership that we have, with your input as a major investor, we can get that done and get the desired results. Over the past year, we've had several planning sessions and retreats along with city staff. Some of the council members have been present, and the, out of those meetings, there are three short-term priorities that I'll go over, and then I will end it. One is to leverage a shovel-ready task force, which has already been appointed by the EDC, to enable the development of a business or light industrial property within the city. Also, to foster and promote development and redevelopment in key areas of the city, key intersections, key corridors, that have already been identified within the city, and to continue that redevelopment. And then, obviously, this is the last one, I've already gone over some of the issues, but rethink and tweak the current EDC framework to see if there are any other efficiencies that we can garner as we move forward. So with that, I have tried to keep it short, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions, whether about the matrix or the metrics that we have provided or anything else.
Are there any questions of Chief Westerman? I mean, the council? Seeing none, you did a superb job.
Thank you very much.
No one has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate you representing the organization as a civic leader and helping to guide what our staff does. I'd also like to take a moment and have Sher Lopez stand and Teresa Evans. They're two of my full-time staff people. I think most of you know them. They're very active and involved in lots of meetings and projects and activity around Blue Springs. I'm going to jump right into the business of the metrics that you have in your packet. First of all, I want to thank Adam for bringing this suggestion to the EDC. We've had lots of forms of reports over the last eight, nine years, starting chiefly with what we submit to the city that falls in line with much of the city departments. And I think over the last year, particularly with Adam's arrival, one of the elements that we saw missing, and we're trying to figure out how do we incorporate, was the work of what the EDC does, marrying up to public policies, the comprehensive plan as an example, and really focusing our attention of, not only we looking at being busy and working on projects and having activity, we're intentionally trying to focus on where do we have gaps and how do we address those gaps. A shovel-ready task force has already identified properties. Frankly, we've been working on that over several years, but now we've taken it up a level. We're looking at a neighboring community, Sedalia, that has a model that might be appropriate. We just had Jeff Clayton, who I was speaking to a moment ago. Jeff has not only the property that he brokered for St. Luke's, the 40 acres that was purchased, but Jeff also represents property in South Blue Springs. The challenge that people like Jeff represent for what we try to do at the EDC and with the city and our investors is, they too want to see development, but they would like to see somebody else trigger and initiate payment for it, and therein lies the challenge and the importance of the shovel-ready task force. Let me just walk you through the pages, and if you have questions, we can go over that. The premise on page one, that is descriptors, demographics, and quality of life, started out with some framework. If you take a look over under the comments section, many of these elements, from a reporting standpoint, will create baseline metrics of what's, what's happening in the city, and I think that's important. Although we can track several of these things, we collaborate with the city very closely in looking at what's happening as it relates to number of residential units, the change in sales tax as a percentage of our growth, per capita property taxes. Those are all elements of sound metrics to measure. Are we rising? Are we staying status quo? Are we falling? And then, using the other items that I'm going to go through here to gauge whether or not we're doing enough and doing enough in the right areas to advance our growth and development. You'll turn to page two. It's business retention and expansion. And when we take a look at what we've done over the last two years, particularly as it relates to Empower Awards, we've had a business retention program for six, seven years. We've had it in earnest, without interrupting, with Teresa Evans on board the last, I think we're coming up on two years with Teresa. And the formality of that is, we don't distract Teresa from going out, calling on businesses or following up with local business in particular. Her emphasis is really local business. So when you take a look at what we're doing here, this is a reflection of what's happening that's active, related to existing businesses, and begins to reflect what we're dealing with in terms of jobs created and/or jobs proposed and/or retained. If you turn to page three, we have a real estate and industrial use sheet, and this really has come out of the last three meetings, starting out with the multi-organizational retreat we did in May, going into the council work session, and then closing that out with the EDC's board retreat in June. We identified really three parcels of primary focus, and that reflects the 280 acres. The primary focus is on the 104-acre site that sits on Lake Remembrance. That area was identified early on, and I'll get to that more in just a moment. If you take a look at a little bit further down under section four, and I think this is, it's really relevant, because when I asked the question, when you probably asked the question, what are we doing to market, promote Blue Springs? I just want to give you some context. When you take a look at number four, that we have 13 available industrial buildings for lease. Now, I don't want you to think that that's 13 entire buildings. That's portions of buildings, and we've run the analysis before. A standalone building, although the, the one being vacated by the city, where the police department's now operating over on AA, that will have space that does have tenants in it. There are people that are subleasing that building. The challenge is, we have very little enabled product that's available for lease. So recruiting a company, most of the time, they want a standalone building. They can't go into places similar to Barrett Park, but what we're getting is remnants. And that's been an issue, frankly, in not only meeting the needs of existing companies, of which we have several that have demand for that space, but certainly in attracting new companies. Similarly, in office, we have, we have the former Harmon Building that has probably the largest contiguous office space available, 14,000 square feet. That number probably isn't a bad number, but we have lots of remnants space, smaller units, 1,500, 2,000, 3,000 square feet. Don't think of this as entire buildings, except in the case of a handful, and Harmon, the former Harmon Building would be the largest. Retail is similar. We have spent, and heard from the council, time on focusing on retail and restaurants. I can go into that more a little bit later on. And when you take a look at our vacancy, this vacancy report really is pretty low. It reflects pretty much what's happening in the metro. A few months ago, it was a little bit lower, 5.7, 5.9, depending upon what source you looked at, so we're really tracking in line with what the metropolitan statistics are. Similarly, those stats for office are pretty close in line with the metro, and the retail is actually much less. And I think that speaks to, we're taking product off the market that really is not relevant or desirable for lease, Wydok being an example. And when that product comes off the market, we'll be bringing new product, but opening up 52,000 square feet across the street. And you also have some metrics there on what some average rates are related to the real estate. If you turn to the next page, Business Attraction and Marketing, this really is a closely-aligned metric with what we've submitted to the city in the past in terms of how this breaks out, and I just want to walk you through this quickly under one. A, this number of contacts made for business attraction. These are businesses that are active, they're viable, they're going to do a project, and it hasn't varied a whole lot over the years. We've had as little as 18 businesses that have fit that bill to as many as 30, 35, and that really was in the last year or two. 30, I think, is a conservative estimate, and we'll certainly do more to increase that number. Number of business visits conducted, these are actually people coming on the ground, driving around with Sher, Teresa, or I, looking at available property and/or sites. And once you get them here, there's a pretty good chance that they've already qualified, that there's a basis for them to do business here. We just have to find the right property and/or building for them to lease. Number of active projects in the pipeline, at any point, this has been as high as 10 and as little as five. I chose six, frankly, because it reflects what I have right now, so I can make a wild guess, but I'm trying to be realistic based upon what we're dealing with. And businesses attracted, I'm not counting retail in this mix. The companies that I'm counting for this purpose are Acto Development and Excelligent, both reflective of work that we did with the city in attracting to Blue Springs. And when you think about Excelligent, they were taking over a building that was trying to vacate, and that's why we ended up getting them here. It also helps that the Currys live just down the road on Colburn, just a little bit off of Lake Laotawana, but first of all, they had to have a building to make this work. When you look at our closure rate, 33 percent, that just happened to be a stat that fit into the graph. I'm not going to make any predictions, but we have a very strong business case if we can bring product to market, and I think that's the message that I hear over and over and over. People are interested, but they usually don't have the timeframe and/or the budget to go out and do a build-to-suit building. They need to move quickly, and quickly is six to eight months. And as you run down these numbers in terms of projects, the ones that I'm reflecting here, redevelopment is about $10 million, new development's about $1 million, and that's based on two projects that we're actively working with right now. If I could turn you to the next page, Leadership Relationships and Communications, this is something that goes into a little bit more detail, that I've said this many times in presenting to you. As much as the EDC leverages the city's investment with additional funds, I think the strength of what you get is participation and engagement of people that buy into, support, and advocate for the city at the civic level, whether it's Chief Westerman, or it's Bill Esman, or it's Aaron Curry. Many of these people are your appointments and have been over the years. And as you look at these numbers, what we're counting here under item one is number of people participating on the board, number of organizations represented, and as you go down this list, if you look at 1E, for example, these are number of meetings that are held in preparation, for example, on 1E for the Empower Awards, and the number of people that we have attending. In many cases, they're not even investors in the EDC, they're just businesses that we do recognize and we work with despite being an investor or not an investor. It's part of our agreement with Blue Springs, and the same with Propel Blue Springs, which is our business visitation program. The rest of this really is metrics based on similar related activity, including our budget and where it comes from, and what percentage of the overall budget it represents on the private versus public sector side. We have a pretty good investor retention rate. If I could have you turn to the next page, Business Creation and Entrepreneurship, this is probably a little bit looser, in my opinion, because when we work with entrepreneurs, frankly, it's very ambiguous for a long period of time, and then it comes together or doesn't come together. So we're trying to take some historic numbers that, that we are pulling together from our history and identifying targets, and this is based on actual work that we've done over the last four years. We've not really spent a lot of time tracking this, but we're now at a point where Grove Blue Springs is sufficiently strong. We think we can hit these targets going forward. The last page are our goals, and these goals really reflect things that are not much different than what we provided in the past, but they give a little bit more narrative context to what we're doing in terms of addressing our performance metrics. I have information on projects that relate to real estate, but I'll leave that up to the council on how they want to proceed. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions, Brian, from the council? Okay. Councilman Culpepper, and then Councilman Edmondson.
Yeah, I have a couple. Back on page two, you just, you said the value. How is, how are you calculating that? Are you talking about the value of?
What's?
The building values, the, to construct a building, or what is that? On number two, on the second page, build a business investment?
We have the $15 million, and then the next fiscal.
Yeah, okay, I follow. In the case of these projects, it's both development and expansion and/or equipment that's been involved in the project. And, let's see, this reflects a combination of investment, I believe, from, this is, attention on expansion. Let's see which project.
Is that the proposed Price Chopper?
I believe it is. Price Chopper is a portion of that, and I think we have Excelligent as the balance of that. Acto happened three years ago, so when I get information from a company, we'll identify, just like we did with Excelligent, how many jobs, what's a capital investment, what's the full-time equivalent, and then we track that. I've not gone in historically and tried to verify, did they do more than that or less than that, but based on what we put together, either in the form of an incentive or what they tell me on the front end of working with the project, that's how we end up tracking these numbers.
Okay. On the fourth page, when you talked about.
And what's the heading, Susan?
Oh, let me see here.
Business Attraction and Marketing.
I flipped too fast. And you talked about real estate inventory with the industrial 13, office 27, retail 39. On the retail, is that concentrated in any particular area?
I don't know that we pulled out a map.
Geographical area?
No. Yeah. Typically, what, and I could break it down by council district if that would be helpful to you, but quite honestly.
I'm just trying to get an idea. Are we talking about empty buildings up and down 7th Highway? Are we talking about a shopping center that's got vacancy?
So, Excelligent collects this data, and the data's only as good as the people that provide it. One of the issues that I've seen historically in 10 years, we have a lot of people that just don't submit their data in Blue Springs. So there might be buildings out there, but in most cases, they're probably third or fourth generation if they're not submitting them to a group like CoStar or Excelligent. They're not hungry to get it brokered, they're going to just find some. They're not hungry to get it brokered, they're going to just find somebody to take the building. This is based on two, one of two entities, either CoStar, which we do not subscribe to, and/or Excelligent. We found Excelligent to be about 85%, maybe 90% accurate of what's happening in the market when we look at other source data. So they might be dead on, they might be a little bit high or a little bit low, but they're reflecting about 85% of the active real estate.
Well, I was just trying to get an idea. I mean, are we, are we talking, are the majority of them in a specific locale, and or are they just helter-skelter throughout the city, you know?
I can get back with you on that. I don't know that.
Okay.
And we do provide these reports in more, more in depth at our monthly board meetings.
But I don't, I mean, I go to those, but I don't have that information.
Yeah. We can, we're going to have one, I think, at Wednesday's meeting. Our subscription with Excelligent has ebbed and flowed because of a participation with Eastern Jackson County organizations, and now we're back into our subscription.
Okay. And then prospects in pipe, in the pipeline. No, I can't find it.
Next page.
No, I can't find it. I'll, I'll give up the...
Business attraction and marketing, it looks like you're looking at one C?
Yeah, C. It was C. Prospects in the pipeline. I'm sorry, I can't.
No, to be, be...
I'm flipping through here, now I've lost mine.
First one and C.
I've lost mine.
Right here, it's the number of attractive prospects in pipeline. So it's under business attraction and marketing, and under one C, the first line, you've got six.
Is this just, are you just saying that, that you're budgeting, if you will, for six in this coming year?
I'm taking a look at what we've done historically, so that at any given point in time, we actually have projects, like existing companies, that are, that have stated to us after meeting with them that they have demands to grow. They're either going to grow physically on their site, and/or in many cases, they can't be accommodated on their site, they need to locate elsewhere. In this particular case, this is on the attraction front, projects that we've talked to that have an interest, but we don't have an available building. We also have the projects that are retention projects. So if you want to go into that in more detail, I do have a report that I can cover on that.
I don't know that, that anybody wants to go into a lot of detail besides me. I'm looking at 33% closure rate, so, so what you're, I just want to understand, so you're saying of the six in the pipeline, you would anticipate closing a third of those?
Just based on what we've done in the last, last two years.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Edmondson?
Susan covered a lot of this, and, and actually, your statement kind of answered part of it. A lot of your matrix is only good as, as where you're getting your information from, and if your information is 85% accurate, it means your metrics are not as accurate as what, what they're stating. Do you, or do you though, can you get, I guess I should ask, the, you've got like the number of retentions, the number of new businesses, do you monitor at all what businesses have left? I mean, in my business situation, when I get new customers in, I also monitor the customers that are leaving, because you're hopefully to get a net, you know, a plus something.
Well, I, I can, I get your point. I think that's a very fair question. We've not historically tracked that because people don't have to contact us if they leave. I know the obvious ones. I know the ones that we're at risk of, that you, you know that we're at risk of. But we have, I want to say, close to 2,000 businesses between water and fire that we're covering. I think we have 1,700, 1,800 business licenses, maybe 1,500, that was the number that I saw today. So there is some discrepancy. Not everybody has a business license that should have a business license, but they don't necessarily notify the city if they're a small entity leasing space that they're leaving. They wouldn't necessarily notify the EDC. It's easier for me to track people that I'm trying to recruit, and they, they're active, they're active, and then they say, no, we're done, we're not, we're not going to continue looking at Blue Springs. The same with, we have a major project that's an existing industry that we're working with, and we have those, and I have details on those. We could tell you, they're looking, they're looking, and in some cases, we already know what one or two of them are saying, they're looking elsewhere now.
You mentioned on retention, and you had a number of outreach contacts, and you've got a goal set at that?
Yes.
So, and I kind of took it from here that you were, that goal is the same. I think I heard you say that, that's kind of consistent or in line with what you have done in the past?
And let me turn to the right page. So if you would turn to the page, it's early on in your packet, business retention and expansion.
Right.
It would be section four, business outreach and assistance.
Right.
So if you take a look at what we did, and I'll explain this in a little bit more detail, we reached out to directly 50 businesses that were targets. It's not every single business in Blue Springs. It's high-value targets, people with jobs, capital, expansion, opportunity, and frankly, some of this is a collaboration of talking to members of the board and/or city staff. Some of them are logical, reaching out to Stone Container, FIC Corporation, CSI, et cetera. Of those, we assisted 24 directly, meaning they actually wanted to talk to us and sit down and meet with us, and we had that meeting. What we don't have reflected in here, because we were modifying this spreadsheet right up to the end, that typically, once we get in the door, we have multiple touches with them. So I'm not double counting or triple counting, so...
That was, you're going where my next question would be.
So, it, we actually are running between two and a half and three touches. Once we get in the door, part of this is a discovery process. Most people don't want somebody coming into their business from the outside unless you have an established relationship. So we use board members and investors to help open the door. But I would say it's generally true in most communities, but particularly true in Blue Springs, people are suspicious. They're suspicious of anybody that they perceive that's going to come in and talk to them about their business or find out about their business. It's been a huge barrier, and everybody from when Eric was chair up to now knows that that's a real threshold issue to get over. It's not so much the issue for mom and pops, but our larger employers, that pretty hard to get in. I mean, you can name examples of how many people have, that are large, that have been highly engaged in the community, and it's a handful. I could identify five right now that just aren't, and has nothing to do with us. It's the culture of the company, it's how they choose to operate. So going forward, we had 70 in 14 to 15, and we had 25 business assists. And as we look at going into the future, because we can't hit the same people every year, it tends to be on a 24-month rotation where we come back to the people because they will, they frankly will not sit down and meet with us and go through an interview like we do every year. Things haven't changed that much. We did meet with one last week, and it's about a year and a half since we met with them, and that, that person is an expansion, attraction candidate. But as we look out, we're looking at 50 as a target.
Okay. And so if I'm understanding you correctly, what you're saying is you're targeting some of the larger businesses, larger manufacturers, larger employers in these contacts? Of the 1,800 to 2,000 business licenses in Blue Springs, how many of those would you think that encompasses? I mean, are you talking 10%? Are you talking 15%, 25%? Or what you would consider those contacts?
I didn't bring my, I didn't bring, Kent, I didn't bring my top 25 employer list, but if you take a look at the top 25, you go from 500 with FIC, you drop down pretty significantly by the time you hit the 25th ranked employer.
Right.
Doesn't mean we're not interested, but I would make this, I would differentiate what we're doing from a how-do-you-do call. Hey, how you doing? How's your day going? Hope everything's going well. Let us know if you have any needs, to going in and actually sitting down and trying to understand their business. What is it that you do? What, where's your products line? Where's your market? Do you have interest in growing overseas? Are you overseas? Do you have any impediments to your physical location? Frankly, it's a 45-minute sit-down session, and I've been doing versions of this for the last 15 years. Theresa's been doing it for about 12. Cher's done it. We did hit a different type of campaign downtown, I want to say five or six years ago, where we enlisted volunteers and we called on 100 business and property owners. And really gave us some sense of what the attitudes were downtown. And Cher helped to conduct that and lead that in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce and other volunteers.
Okay.
I would, I would share with you, there might be other ways we could get people to participate, but if you do a direct mail campaign, success is about one and a half, 2%.
Correct.
You're not going to have 10% people.
I think you're wasting your money doing that.
Well, I, part of this is, the more we spend time with people that deal with the EDC, if you hear an issue, see an opportunity, and you're not aware that we're aware of it, that's why we want our investors and our board members and our allies to let us know, we'll reach in. And that happens every single day. Sometimes we get success, other times we don't.
Yeah. Well, I found that, you know, six contacts are usually your tipping point. It takes a while, maybe you're doing it more in-depth on your contacts, but you're also spreading them out, sounds like over a year and a half, two-year time. A lot of that, people change, things change in between times, you're missing out on some things, I would think. But, but I know it's your system that you've got, I just, I question some of that, it's not being either efficient or not being detailed enough to gather what you need to keep your hand or finger on the pulse of what's going on.
So I, I'd share with you, we're not much different than anybody else that does this. In fact, right now, there's only two or three communities in the metro that do what we do. Most of them choose not to do it, and they don't have a system to do it, and they don't track what they do. And we did this on our own, and then partnered with the Full Employment Council and Kansas City Power and Light to become part of a broader metropolitan system. And as soon as the money dried up for everybody else, all those other communities and organizations quit. We kept going. The challenge was, this is not a community that's prone to people sharing or giving information and letting you in the door. It's, it's the nature of our community, and I'm not talking about the small mom and pops. The larger businesses that are employers, that they're just guarded.
I'm again talking about some of those too, so...
Yeah. There was one today that I was sharing with Adam. We were talking about some good news coming from them. Getting into them, it's easier to get into ATK, quite honestly. And that does take a process, but you're fingerprinted, you're photographed, you have a background check, and that's if they want to meet with you. And, and it's not a, it's not a process of inconveniences holding us back, it's a willingness on their part to sit down and meet with us.
Okay.
And they're an extreme example.
And that answers your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to go to Councilman Levis, but before we go to that, I think a lot of times to be able to be successful in getting into businesses are relationship-driven. Not necessarily all by staff, but by the investors, by your board of directors, and quite frankly, by the city council. They can open doors to businesses rather than just calling them cold turkey.
Maybe if you meet them in a Costco or something, for example?
Yeah, you know? You're absolutely right. It could be a Costco in the tire department.
Yeah.
For those that don't know, that's kind of how we got Acto out here. But anyway, Chris?
Councilman Edmondson, I think, began to address my question, but, so these 30 points of contact under the business attraction, are those points of contact for businesses within Blue Springs that are maybe looking to expand, or that's all outside Blue Springs that you're looking to attract?
They're outside Blue Springs.
Okay.
We separately track business attraction.
So how do you determine what businesses to contact to attempt to attract?
So some of it's just what the mayor related. Let me start out, and I'm very sensitive on the time. To go out proactively, engage in a marketing recruitment campaign is not easily achieved in Blue Springs because we don't have product. And product is an available building that's ready for lease. If you talk to Red Development, we could, and I frequently reached out to restaurants, they'll tell you, they know exactly who they want, they know who they're going to go after, they know what their market is in that, that niche. If you're going after industrial or office, we have to have something in the product queue. And that's, that's not my data, that's coming from all the other authoritative sources out there. 85 to 90% of every project coming to Kansas City comes to and locates in an existing building. Just the nature of what it is.
So your process by which to contact a business for traction is reactionary to you, that you've made some sort of relationship, like, like the mayor said?
Well, I wouldn't say it's reactionary, it's proactive. So at every board meeting, we talk, does anybody know of a project, a client, a company? We read about things, we hear about things as we're meeting with people, and we'll proactively pick up the phone. That's not the stuff I'm tracking here. The things I'm tracking are actually people that we've gotten past that point, they have a project, we've gotten Blue Springs on their radar, and there's some interest at some level. Now, they might quickly indicate, and I've got one in a report I'll show you, that within 45 days, they came and they went. They came, they looked, they toured a site, they didn't include me, but they had our data, and then they decided it wasn't a fit and they moved on. So it, it comes in lots of formats. There's not a ready-made list you're going to buy for this. And when I work with brokers, some of them bird dog projects, a lot of them just pick up the phone and go, yeah, I've got a building, I think I can do a lease for you.
Well, I think I would just express, and I know you and I have had this conversation before, my, at least, process, our thought process on this was, an attraction should come from a community interest. And so my expectation of the EDC is that you get your, your ideas of what businesses to attempt to attract based on what the community needs are, not simply just based on the relationships that you've already established, but if we're looking for something in particular, my expectation of the EDC is that they're going to go out and try to get it. And so regardless of whether or not you already have a connection to that business, I think it's, it's incumbent on the EDC to be the functionary that goes out and seeks those businesses. So that would be my expectation for attraction, is you look for those community priorities and then make those attempts to attraction based on those needs.
So I, I hear you loud and clear, and we do attempt that. The, the challenge, Chris, to use an example, is to recruit a restaurant here, they're going to typically go to an existing building that's available for lease. And we have buildings that frankly are leased up, not unlike what happened with the GE building where the city has the police department. For a long time, the GE lease ran through that, they really didn't care whether they had another tenant in there. They weren't, they weren't too interested. We have that with the restaurant, as you go into Mall of Fall Creek. It's not a lack of interest on our part, but when we engage the broker or the key contact or the company, did this with Steak 'n Shake for a long time, they just weren't interested in moving on it. Even though Steak 'n Shake owned that building up until three years ago, most of these types of businesses will go where there's development, which is why we had the meeting with Spencer Thompson. So you have a developer behind the scenes that's got the wherewithal to bring development to a site, and then we engage with them, and then in addition, and I've done this with the CVS out there, I call to affirm what the people brokering the deal out of Ohio on the CVS, what's happening in Blue Springs, what the council's attitude is about business growth and development, and trying to sell beyond the fact that there's just a lease there to negotiate for building construction.
Sure.
So we, we do do that, but you can't take a shotgun approach at it, unfortunately. There's just so many variables, most of it having to do with, do we have something that's actually viable, ready to lease, or a development site that's shovel-ready, where development can occur with a fixed price for the land and the improvements?
Okay.
And that, that is the gap that I think we, we've struggled with in lots of places in Blue Springs.
Okay. Does that do it? Anybody else, any other questions? If not, thank you, Brian, for your presentation. And that will conclude the presentation on the Economic Development Performance Measurement Program, and we're going to go to Merrill Announcements. First one, go Royals.
One to nothing.
Woo!
Really? All ready, us or them?
Us.
Not that I'm snooping the ESPN app.
Thought you were giving me a chief score. That's bad, I'm wrong. Well, before we meet again, there's, there's something called Halloween. And the downtown trick-or-treat on Main Street is Saturday, October 31st, from 10 to noon. So if you're interested in that, got grandkids, kids, whatever you want to bring down, be sure and do that. I'm going to go straight to thoughts to pundit. Tonight comes from Walter Winchell. And I quote, "A real friend is one who walks in when the rest of the world walks out," end quote. No visitors appearance form, and I'm going to defer to our city attorney for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the following motion would be appropriate. I move that this body go into closed session pursuant to Section 610-021, Subparagraphs 1, 2, and 12, revised statutes of Missouri, for the purpose of having confidential and privileged communications between a governmental body or its representatives and its attorney relating to legal action, causes of action, or litigation involving this body and legal advice. Communications and discussions related to real estate where public knowledge of the transaction may be detrimental to the completion thereof, per the transaction may be detrimental to the completion thereof, per contract negotiation, discussions, and review of confidential documents, that any votes, minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed, and that this body stand adjourned at the completion of such session.
So moved. There's a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Cope?
Aye.
Councilman Levis?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Okay, we're going to recess for about two or three minutes to allow our visitors to be excused, and then we will go into executive session.